It's a terrible noise. I don't know about you guys, but...
Okay. Let's get started. Welcome to the Isiqua City Council Committee Work Session this Monday, January 12, 2015. I gotta write that time. We have one item on the agenda. It is known as concurrency. And this is a topic we're all very familiar with. And tonight, we're gonna start with Development Services Director Charlie Bush will be presenting to us kind of an executive summary and overview. And I really expect and hope that this frames conversation that we can have during his presentation. And after that part of the meeting, then there's three sections within the packet. There's policy section, there is ordinance section, and there is the code amendment section. And I'm gonna do, gonna wanna do a check with everybody because in the end, the ordinance and the code amendments are what get enacted, and our policies drive that. And this is, this really is our best opportunity to date to, no question should go unanswered. No point of view should go unshared. I'm most interested in having a good lively conversation. Uncertainty, doubt, question, now's the time to bring them up. And let's talk about them now. Because the decision in front of us is whether or not this package is ready for action a week from tonight. I hold the option available that maybe it's not. But that would have to be borne based upon our conversation and other things that we learned here tonight. But the current plan is to have it on the agenda a week from tonight. But let's see where this goes. And again, I really, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you many times, everybody here, if you have questions, if you have concerns, let's get them out, let's discuss them. So with that introduction, before I turn it over to Charlie, does anybody wanna make a speech before we get started?
Speech.
Here's your chance. Okay. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Charlie?
We're back. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right. You'll recall this process started a couple of years ago, actually back in 2013, continued through all of last year, and potentially, as Council President Wintersheim was mentioning, could conclude this month. It's included in open house that we had back in, I believe it was November, and numerous council work sessions. We actually looked back, we appeared at half of your work sessions last year, in addition to many, many, many committee meetings. So if a work session happens in February, Dave and I will not know what to do with ourselves, having an open evening. Nor will Randy. He'll actually be able to do something for somebody else. So why are we here? I just wanted to go back to the original purpose. And one of them is, transportation is the top concern of the community. This is the perspective of the administration. It's an action item in the central plan. This is, this was a follow-up item in the central plan to go look at parks and traffic impact fees. And also, we did the Burke Study during the central plan process, and that looked at fiscal impacts of that plan. And within that, there were some very large numbers that you may recall. And so this isn't really a surprise to us that we're back here talking to you about these things at this point in time. We also needed to update our parks and traffic impact fees. They were due for an update, they've been due for an update. Ideally, you do that every three to five years. It had been six and eight years, I recall, on those studies. So it was definitely time. And of course, we passed the central plan, so we have updated numbers, and that since our last update. And so all of our models got updated, traffic numbers got updated, development has occurred. A bunch of circumstances have changed that bring us to this point. Lastly, we saw the opportunity to streamline concurrency, to change the process of how we do concurrency. In other words, how development, as it relates to traffic impacts in particular, how it occurs concurrent by state law within six years, how those impacts are mitigated. And simplified concurrency is the process that we've talked with you about. It allows us to look at things from a system perspective, to have a high-performing system, as opposed to studying each development's impacts on specific intersections and trying to make sure that those specific intersections remain high-performing. So it's a philosophy change in the way that we do this, and it streamlines things, makes it easier for developers, and potentially makes it easier for us to accomplish our vision. Yes?
Okay, thanks. So I just, it may seem like an obvious question, but that first bullet, does anybody wanna dispute that? It's a top concern. Does any, is it just, is, so I mean, we put a lot of time and energy, and I think the proportionate amount of time we're putting into this have already, and will be putting into it over the course of this year, just mobility in general. I mean, it is a reflection of not only this council, but also our community's belief that something we need to address, traffic in Isiqua. Is anybody, so I just wanna make sure, I mean, everybody's with me, right? That this is a top issue that we need to do something about. All right, thank you. Nina? Yeah?
Go back. So having a high-performing system is an interesting phrase. When you're saying, is there anything to be debated here?
Okay, sure.
Having a high-performing system, one thing that's been occurring to me over these deliberations is the difference between a suburban transportation system, or even a rural transportation system, and one that's urban. And we're looking ahead at a 2030 plan where Isiqua is quite urban. So what does high-performing mean in an urban setting is still something I'm grappling with. I'm just throwing that out there as you're asking for.
So that's just an open question in your mind?
Just a comment, just reflection on the comments here.
All right, thank you.
All right. I would at least submit somewhat of an answer to that, which it means what we think high-performing is to us. So it really, if we determine that we want a certain outcome from the system, then high-performing would be getting that outcome.
Yeah, it's very open.
It is. Some key factors, some things I just wanted to mention that have been underlying this whole process, particularly as we talk about the transportation system. We're in a growing urban region, so we're not in a situation where we're geographically isolated from neighbors, and so we have regional traffic, we have a lot of things that are outside of our control that impact our community. We have geographic constraints, we have mountains, and we have very narrow transportation corridors where traffic really is funneled, because you can't go other ways. We also have a very large lake in Lake Simamish. So there's some real restrictions there. We have all these intersecting regional corridors, and many of them go to I-90. And I-90 really, from a traffic modeling perspective, is a magnet for trips. People wanna get to I-90, there's capacity there, it's the way to get to work in a lot of cases, or the way to get to transit service and that type of thing. So the result of that is been historically for us, that we've had a lot of regional traffic, we continue to have a lot of regional traffic. And when you look at the way we've modeled all this, and you start looking at the fiscal impacts, about 70% of the fiscal impacts are the result of regional traffic. Now, there is an upside to regional traffic, and the big upside for us historically has been our retail base. When you have a lot of traffic, retail is attracted to those types of environments because it's an opportunity for customers going by your door. And as a result, we've done very well with sales tax over the years, we've had a good commercial base. The downside, of course, is you have more cars out there, and you have more congestion, potential for congestion. And as we heard from Torsten's presentations previously, and from Randy's as well, trips that, or end here, are not trips that we have a real feasible way of charging their impact on our street systems. That's the downside. It's just a reality for us, is we have this regional traffic, and we've gotta grapple with it as we try to maintain a level of service that we determine means high performance for us. The Growth Management Act is out there, all the planning we do, you'll hear about growth targets in a little bit, the fact that we're in this region, that we have growth targets allocated to us, we have certain constraints in the way that we go about doing this whole process, even levels of service are directly out of the Growth Management Act. And so the context in which we operate in all of this is within state law. And so our decisions are somewhat limited, and I'll talk a little bit about, well, what if we didn't grow, a little bit later in this presentation. And then, the burden for funding government is really shifting, and it's just something to think about. From the federal level, there are a lot of things that have historically been funded that aren't necessarily being funded at the same rate. The state level, we've certainly heard a lot about the state's budget issues, and those are continuing. And so what you see is unfunded mandates, or things just not being done that used to be done, that are all falling down to us at the local level, and we need to deal with those. And across the country, cities are stepping up to deal with those. Yes?
You know, on the regional traffic, I just wanna be clear, when we say regional traffic, you know, we talk about it like it's this great mass of vehicles that just appears on our roads, and clogs them up, and then disappears after rush hour. When we say that it's 70% of the total fiscal impact, are we literally talking about vehicles that are going from, say, Simamish to Renton and just passing on through? Or are we talking about the regional trips that originate or end in our city but are not staying within the city, so in essence, they become regional?
Talking about those that do not start or end here, so they just pass through. I could've called them pass-through trips. To be very explicit.
Because I think it's an important distinction, because when we say regional, going somewhere outside the city, by adding more development in the city, we are increasing the amount of trips that will originate or terminate outside the city as well.
No question that we are in an interconnected region, we have impacts on neighboring jurisdictions, and they have impacts on us, and that's part of the challenge and the opportunity here. So growth targets, I mentioned this a little bit in relation to the Growth Management Act. Through the Puget Sound Regional Council, in this region, in this, there's a regional allocation process. It's happened a couple of times, and it will continue to happen as a part of state law, where we're given employment targets, we're given population targets, and we have to find a way to plan for those. And through the passage of the central plan, we did that. And in fact, in the residential, we bumped it up even a little bit beyond our growth target, to have the opportunity to become a regional growth center. And with the regional growth center, we ran some numbers, because you've seen there's an over $300 million total set of projects, and within that, it's over $80 million in grants that we have anticipated we could receive. Of that, $50 million of the 80-plus million is a direct result of being a regional center, should we get that designation this year, which is certainly something we're pursuing. We meet the criteria, we expect that will occur, and that's a key part of this plan. So that's 1/6 of the total, 1/6 of the 300 million. It's a very significant amount. In addition to that, and I'm asking for some more detail from Metro to help us see if we can quantify this, additional transit service. Regional growth centers receive additional transit. It's one of the criteria that Metro looks at, and Sound Transit looks at, for providing transit service. And so we're getting, certainly having more density has bigger potential for ridership, and it's one of the key things that we've built into our plan with the central plan. So we've decided to grow in this way. We've decided to grow in a responsible way, if you wanna look at it from a sustainability perspective, because we're encouraging people to live, work, and play in the same area. We're encouraging people to not have a lot of single occupancy vehicle trips. We've looked at the mode split, which we talked about previously, but the number of, or the percentage of non-single occupancy vehicle trips that we put into our modeling, and for Model Run 3, which we'll talk about in a little bit, that was a 10% increase. That's a goal of ours, that's something we're gonna have to work towards, and with the walk and roll plan and other projects that we've put in place, that we're looking at funding through this plan, we have the opportunity to meet those goals. Neighborhood preservation's another key. So we've looked at growing in a dense, mixed-use way in the central plan, and instead of assuming growth or accommodating growth by upzoning other areas of our community. And so we're preserving existing neighborhoods as best we can, and hopefully bringing in additional revenue, so we can even enhance those neighborhoods in our overall services. And lastly, the comprehensive plan, you're gonna hear from Trish very soon in our major update of our comp plan, about growth targets that are all, of course, worked into our comp plan, but that's a great place to talk about our overall overarching community growth plans. So that's a great place for that conversation. Yes?
So do you have any, or is it in our material? It might be, I just don't recall. This regional allocation, I know we can look at different time horizons into the future, but could you just share with us any actual numbers, both what would have come, and then how, what we added to that with our central Isiqua plan and our regional growth center designation?
Yeah. Trish, do you wanna help out with that? Trish is my good lecturer, and nobody ever asks about growth targets until now, when Trish comes along. This is why she's here.
It actually is in your huge sack of information.
Okay.
And I will turn to it, just so I don't get the numbers wrong. Our targets for 2031 were 7,750 additional housing units.
Could you tell us where it is in the...
I'm looking at the Tuesday, December 2 agenda.
So page, edge of the packet?
And it's, I have, it's page six. It's along with the chart on it?
Yeah. And then we'll change it to this, translate that to today's packet.
It's in the question and answers. Oh, yeah, it's at the top of that.
So in today's packet, it's page 45 of 290 in the PDF version, and it's page six of the Q and A document. And it's question...
It's above the charts. Question two, I believe?
Two, question two.
Did everybody find it? That wanted to find it? And it's, we took 200 more additional units because, pardon? 2,000? Oh, is that 2,000? But we took less jobs than we needed to, 775 less than our growth targets was the final central plan. And that, again, was to be eligible to be a regional center.
So the 7750 increase in housing units, that is, so what's the no-action? What if we hadn't? Wouldn't the number have been otherwise?
Well, we would've still had to accommodate that between 2006 and 2031. It just, they, we're allowed to choose where we're gonna accommodate it, by either upzoning or downzoning, or whatever we choose to do. For example, we could've put it in Park Point, but we chose not to. We chose that that was a really good spot to keep natural, and so we worked on ways to do that. We felt that downtown on either side of I-90 was a perfect spot for housing opportunities and mixed use, 'cause of I-90, 'cause of the transit opportunities, 'cause there's no housing there now. It wouldn't change any of the existing neighborhoods to put it all in the center area there. So that was sort of the public process we went through with the community, is where would you like these new homes that we have to accommodate in the next 20, 20 years?
So thank you. That answer is where? What would've been the allocation without the growth center designation?
That is the allocation. That was before we were thinking about it. We received that allocation.
That's not what it says on the document. It says the central plan allows for 7,750 additional housing units, which is more than our growth target by 2,000.
You're right, I'm sorry.
So the, I think the answer to Paul's question is 5750.
Right. It's the previous number, the 2,000 less. Thank you, Stacy.
Okay, so, and so that's citywide, that's not just within the...
Correct. Correct. And we're allowed to choose as a community where we would put those, just like the other couple of growth targets sessions that we've taken, the community decides where to put it through the comprehensive planning process.
So we were looking at 57, we would've been looking at 5750.
Right, and 20,000 jobs.
Looking at, in 20,000...
And 20,000 jobs.
Yeah, well, just housing right now. So we would've been looking at 5750, we're looking at 2,000 more, so what's the ratio? That's about a 30%, 30% increase. And it's done with infill, with higher density, in an area least impactful to existing neighborhoods. I mean, that's a big part of the vision of this, of the central area.
Right.
And so, and I'm just, I just think it's really important to have these proportions. We're talking about a slate of projects for growth to help us fund, and I think it's, you know, I think we'd be having quite a different conversation if we were talking about 5750.
Right. The issue is, and that we came up with when we were talking to the community, everyone was asking, where would we put the next set of growth targets? And that's a valid question, because, you know, our annexation areas are built out with the villages, there aren't a lot of areas left. And so we started thinking, if we had to be proactive now, and have that regional center, and keep growing in the middle where there's no, where we're not gonna affect the existing neighborhoods, why wouldn't we do that, instead of making a plan, and then four years down the road, oh, you have to take another 3,000 housing units and how many ever jobs, and we wouldn't really have a really good place to put them? So being on the urban growth line, and being very strong about holding, and not going into the rural area, like some other communities try to do, we knew we had to make the best of the land that we have for the targets that we're receiving now and that we're going to receive in the future.
Okay, thank you. Just the picture I'm trying to get is just that of, you know, the alternative of having not adopted these growth targets. We still know that there's significant, significant growth, and I think coupled with your comment early, Charlie, about, you know, what just the growth center designation makes us at least, makes us eligible for up to, you know, that additional funding. Now, we don't know what the slate of projects would be, and what the costs would be if we didn't have these type of plans. And I think, you know, that is something that it would be interesting in the time remaining if we could get some kind of idea of that. I think we've already discussed that, so, okay, thank you.
Ask a question.
Yeah, Nina?
Trish, too.
Sure.
So on that same page, there's a chart below, of our chart, that's showing existing residential units, 2013, and then the 2030. And the difference between those numbers is over 10,000 residential units. And the reason I bring it up is that what I wondered is, where is the number of how many residential units we have right now?
That number's in the comp plan. These are, were used for the traffic model, and I think, Dave, did they come right out of the EIS that we did for Central? That's what I'm thinking. I think that's why the numbers don't completely add up specifically to the numbers that were the finalized numbers that we took, because in the, I don't know if you recall, in the EIS, we actually had the two alternatives, one that had higher housing and lower jobs, and one that was the opposite. And then we chose the one that had the higher housing units and less jobs in it. And so I think that's, these numbers, and if Torsten were here, he could correct me if I was wrong, but I think these numbers come from the EIS that we did. But speaking of the, how many we have now, we started actually, if you will, monitoring how many housing units we were adding in 2006, 'cause that's when the growth target started. And so we had a certain amount of them before we adopted the central plan, and that number's actually in the central plan, to show that all of them don't have to be done by the central plan, that there was already some that were in the hopper, if you will, before we adopted the central plan. I can get the number for you for the next time you guys meet.
Well, the reason I bring it up is just to clarify what the growth really means. Paul's pointed out the difference between two different options in growth. One would be to take on the Growth Management Act requirement, and the other would be to go for the regional growth center. And proportionally, those two compare to one another, but how does it compare to what we already have? Helps to paint the picture.
Okay. Well, we would've, if we hadn't adopted the central plan, we would've just done the 5,000, just through rezoning different pieces and parts. And we felt as a community, when we would go through and do the open houses and the asking of the community what they thought, we weren't getting a lot to put all 5,000, you know, 'cause we didn't get the regional center designation, you know, we didn't meet any of the targets that would've gotten us an extra bonus, if you will, from state grants and other PSRC funding. And so we thought, geez, we're growing so much and we're not getting anything. If we just took, like, the next set of growth targets, we could actually start paying for it, be eligible to pay for some of the infrastructure now, is what that thought was.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I'd mention one other thing on this slide, which is the fourth bullet down, which, if you think about this, with the regional growth center designation, bumping up those residential units to get to that level, there's a lower incremental cost for those than there is for the rest of the planned development, because of the, that we're able to leverage, because the additional transit service and how that relates to mode split, which means fewer cars on the road, which means fewer projects. There's a real benefit to that. So I just wanted to make sure I made that point before I moved on.
Well, and I wanna reiterate that, I've been thinking about that quite a bit, and this is one thing I've asked him to do some research on, is that, and this is, this is a big ask of information, but, you know, from a citizen's perspective, what's the, like, the per capita, or per $1,000 of value, property value you have? What's the different burden city share on our residents with a growth center versus not growth center? That's, you know, we didn't model that, we didn't, because we had it in our plan, we didn't, we didn't not model. None of our runs did that in this concurrency thing. But I think it's a very interesting question, and I, as a citizen and a property owner myself, if I'm considering or hearing about different potential, you know, proposals, and I'd very much like to know, you know, what's the burden to me between the two options? And I think that's an interesting way to cast this, because, you know, I think what, at least what I've been hearing, and one of the reasons, you know, I'm very interested in this route that we're on right now, is that, is that there's very, that any type of improvement to a top city issue, that being transportation, would very likely be much higher per capita via kind of a non-growth center route.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you just said.
Same thing Charlie just said, but my own words. So, but this is what I've been thinking about, is that, is that there is, by doing the extra planning that we have for growth, both population and jobs, does avail, we have to build more projects, and, but it, and it does also avail us to significantly more non-city dollars. So, and so, but, so what would be the per capita city share in the no-growth, or the non-regional growth center plan versus the regional growth center plan? So it's like those, so it's like, it's like those extra 2,000 dwelling units, just, they are not weighted the same. They're of tremendous value to us. We're talking about leveraging and investment, and they're of tremendous value. I don't know what that ratio is, but I think that would be very, very powerful. By just kind of thinking about it, and I don't have a calculation on this, my sense is, is that they, that, because they have such higher weighted value to us when it comes to access to regional funding, the net, you know, kind of per capita burden is probably less. And that's just a theory, and hopefully we can get some more information. Nina?
Yeah, I think that's interesting, and I appreciate what you're saying, but it is very speculative to say it that way without working it out. But then furthermore, how far could you go with that speculation, when just moments ago, we said that I-90 was a big draw to regional traffic and causing congestion on our roadways? We'll put a train station in here and just wait and see how much regional traffic we might be able to attract to clog up our roadways if we do it, if we have that. So a regional growth center will present a different outcome as well, and it's something that's been considered here. It may cost less, it may impact more. Still kind of speculative, and weighing, weighing which thing matters more. Still an interesting discussion. I would like to know how much different per capita it is.
Okay.
I agree.
Thanks, Trish.
All right. One more thing to add, which is, I was just talking to Trish over here, by 2030, we expect another round of growth targets to come through. And so whatever additional residential we've looked at, we're likely, those will get picked up in the next round of growth targets. So we're sort of ahead of the game going into the next round, for what it's worth. Policy direction. So now we're going from big global picture, more down to the specific discussion, and I wanted to repeat back to you a little bit of what we've heard. First thing I wanted to mention is, and there's been some talk out there about the exercise we're going through, this is a very common exercise for cities to go through. The simplified concurrency element of it is certainly a little bit more unique, but it's been done in other communities as well. The stuff's all legally defensible, it's all consistent with GMA, and it's a common approach in our state, and we have experts that we've hired to help us with tons of experience. And so I just wanted to start out by saying that, mainly for the viewing public, just so folks have that context. The policy direction, we believe we've heard from you, council, is very consistent with staff recommendations over time, but it's been an iterative process. You know, we've come to you and said, what do you think? This is what we recommend. We've checked in, we've made tweaks along the way. And as you're probably familiar with, at this point, we have a very big policy sort of decision matrix that we've set up, that I'll refer to in just a second here. Level of service for the viewing public, this is the concept, and Randy, I'm sure will jump in here if I bungle this, but I've heard him say it enough times, I think I have it down. Basically, level of service is delay time at intersections. It's the way we measure it under the Growth Management Act. And A, it's like report cards, A is really good, F is really bad, everything in between is a... A is really good, F is really bad, everything in between is a spectrum. We're currently at level of service D, that's not uncommon in our region and as communities become more urbanized, the level of service tends to drop. It's just a result of being in an interconnected region as density increases, traffic increases, et cetera. We're proposing to drop slightly to weighted level, to weighted average D, which means that we're dropping a few of the intersections below D, but overall, as a community, if you did a weighted average, we'll remain at D. That's the policy direction we believe we've heard from council to date. Model Run Three, I mentioned model runs. We did a no action alternative, basically. We looked at what if we did nothing? We looked at building out our, our full transportation improvement program. We ran a model, Model Run Two that looked at trying to fix everything with roads and had a, a mode split that wasn't as, as bicycle and pedestrian friendly and non-SOV friendly as Model Run Three. A Model Run Three was really a kind of a compromise place, kind of a spot where we found that the things that seemed to be of interest to the councils, we shared these with you, kind of all came together and we were listening throughout this process and figuring out how to run Model Run Three. So, we do have higher levels, as I've mentioned earlier in this presentation, of non-SOV, non-signal occupancy vehicle trips, assuming there are car pools, van pools, bicycle trips, pedestrians and we've done the walk and roll plan. You recently approved that. That addresses at least providing the infrastructure for the bicycle and pedestrian trips at a more significant level and every project from that plan that would qualify for being a part of the, the mitigation fee, we've, we've tried to fund with that, at least the, the portion that we could fund with it. So, we're addressing that goal as a part of this and in addition, the Regional Growth Center, additional transit service and other things we're doing also will play into that. The projects that are in here, you'll recall, we went through a process where we looked at the whole TIP and there were some projects that just didn't have the cost benefit attached to them that, that we would all expect and so, Torsten, working with Sheldon, removed a number of projects to get us to Model Run Three and to try to bring the cost to, to a very good place, as, as good as it could be, given the cost benefit ratios on, on each of the individual projects. And so, we really did our due diligence, worked our way through that and landed on Model Run Three. Yes?
Charlie, I just wanted to share and bring up now, because I want to talk about it later, that I think it's interesting now and this has been such, as Paul had said at one of our meetings, a fire hose of information and sometimes, this has been sitting here since last July, but I didn't even really read it until now because I was reading so many things. On page 52 of our packet, there's a really nice chart about the LOS summary by alternative and I, I just want to bring it up now because it shows that our existing level of service has over 77% at levels A, B, or C. You know, we keep talking about the weighted average D and then how many intersections we let go to F and, and all that sort of thing and so, this got way past me that right now, level of service A, B, or C, which are quite high performing intersections, we have 77% and even with let, Model Run Three, we'll have 60% at A, B, or C to get to that weighted level D. It's not like all intersections are at D. So, I think it's, it's worth looking at that as we are exploring this transition to an urban center.
It's important to mention, we didn't even go there in this discussion. We, there, there, you could've, had you wanted to. We could've talked about raising the level of service, but you can imagine, given where we are from a numeric perspective, raising the level of service would've meant a tremendous dollar amount and would've been really challenging. I have a feeling towards the model that he would've been showing large roadways that would've partly filled with regional traffic and it would, it's almost impossible to build your way out, so, this is just where we are as a region and it's a good observation, yeah. The way it is currently, it's certainly not, not going to stay there with what we're looking Additional policy direction, we talked about the non-motorized fee. This helps fund, as I mentioned again, those walk and roll projects in addition to some other bicycle and pedestrian projects. The non-residential parks impact fee, in other words, we've had a residential parks, residential development parks impact fee for some time, but we've heard from you that you are interested in the non-residential fee that we've put in front of you as well. It's important to mention that fees do not apply to change of use. Currently in the city, there is an impact fee that's paid when landlord rents out a building for commercial use to somebody new and that will no longer be the case, so, if you have an existing building, this is a, something that should help ease of business and certainly ease of administration on our end as well. The simplified predictable process. This is really helpful for developers. You'll recall, there'll be a, a calculator on our website, anybody'd be able to go if they've got a development and they know what type of development it is, they'll be able to plug some information in our website and find out instantaneously how much it would cost them from an impact fee perspective to develop here. That's opposed to the current system of contacting us, having us model it with Torsten and CH2M Hill and then they would typically, if it's a large development, hire their own traffic consultant. We'd have dueling traffic consultants and in the end, we would try to figure something out that would work, but often it was, it was a frustrating process for both sides and so, this allows us to get quite a bit further down the road. There's an extensive list of discussion items, that policy matrix I mentioned, so there's a lot more, I'm just giving you. And all of that direction led us to the code that we have in front of you, that's really the action item for this agenda bill. So, the question's been out there a little bit and I, I thought I would address it. What if we didn't grow at all? And I've addressed it a little bit already, but the Growth Management Act really in this region requires us to grow and so, if we want to stay consistent with the Growth Management Act, we really don't have a choice. In addition to that, we have development agreements that are already in place that have vested development included in them, so, we're committed to that growth and that's a significant percentage of our overall planned growth. If we didn't grow, we would have limited additional revenues to build improvements. There wouldn't be impact fees, the ones that we're talking about, coming in, so, so that would be definitely a challenge and it would also affect our, you know, potential future ability to raise tax revenues, because you'll recall, even with the property tax, the way it's assessed or calculated is always our total assessed valuation of the community plus new construction. Well, if you take new construction away, then you're really struggling to, to build any kind of property tax base. We would struggle to maintain our level of service, get regional traffic coming in, we have limited revenues, we can't really build, build projects very well and ultimately, we're going to have to take a look at our level of service anyway and have a big public funding discussion about that, just to either maintain our level of service or let it go and, and continue to drop it. And so, the, the point is, regional traffic's there no matter what. Yes?
So, I was looking back to try to figure out when we approved all this growth and it was, it was even before the Central Area Plan and I was shocked because I was on the council in 2010 and I was shocked to discover that in April of 2010, we approved on a consent calendar, a resolution which authorized the adoption of the county's GMA requirements, which set forward the 5,000 housing units and the 20,000 jobs and that sort of thing. I don't remember ever talking about it. It looks like it was plopped on a consent calendar and we approved the resolution. This was in April of 2010, so this is, you know, almost five years ago. I don't remember much discussion leading up to that. So, I guess my question is, and I'm not saying no growth per se, but I'm saying, what is the mechanism by which that can ever be revisited? I mean, are we just locked in stone here that we are adding 20,000 jobs and thousands of housing units and there's just, we've reached the point of no return or do we have to go back to the county if we decided to revisit that and have them reopen the book? How, how does that all work?
Trish will speak to the process.
Right. To answer your first question, by the time it got to PSRC to put it in, or the regional, by the time the numbers got to GNPC to put in the King County wide policies, the jurisdictions had already adopted them in their comprehensive plans, so we would've already, as a community, adopted them in the comprehensive plan and the population chart and the level of service for capital facilities, so you would've seen that and Planning Policy Commission would've seen it in their public hearings before it even went to the King County wide policy, so that's why it was on the consent agenda, because it was already in our comprehensive plan and it seemed odd to have a discussion about something that you had already approved in the comprehensive plan. That's why it was a consent agenda. But the process would be if a jurisdiction can't make the targets or having troubles making the targets, those, we try to get those out in the open when we're all negotiating who gets to take which targets. Obviously, cities like Sammamish try to get more, you know, they would like to get more jobs, but they know they're probably not going to get more jobs, so they're usually get higher housing targets and so, there's a lot of negotiation that goes through the, the Eastside Cities. If you, if you can't make your targets, there aren't a lot of troubles that you get into yet, like there's no sanctions or they don't take away your money for different things, but they look poorly on you when you do go out for grants and, and are trying to qualify for things because they feel that you haven't done your jurisdictional duty to try to help with everybody, you know, that, you know, all the boats are supposed to go out, but there aren't any, you know, sanctions or anything like that yet. But they do get renegotiated every couple of years. I think this last one we had was either five or seven years, I think it was seven years because of the recession. No one wanted to talk growth targets during the, the bad years, but I'm sure that there'll be another set of growth targets that we'll have to negotiate between now and the next, you know, 2030, you know, obviously, but then we'll all be at the table again saying, you know, how well did you do? Another interesting story that you might like is we did so well when the Highlands came in and we went over our targets, that a lot of the Eastside Cities were asking us to take more for that next time and we said, no, just because we're doing well doesn't mean we want everything and so, the next time then we didn't, you know, we just took the minimum. But then this time though, it, it looked like it was better for us to take more or to, to have more sort of as a buffer for when the next targets come out. So, it all depends on where the city is when the targets are being negotiated. Does that help?
It, it does and I'll just do a follow-up then. So, by doing a trip bank that's based on those targets, right, 8,400 trips available is based on these adopted target levels, so, when the time comes to renegotiate, if there's a sea change and a souring on that level of, of added growth, you then go back and you just say, well, now, now we're going to just reduce the amount of trips in the bank? That's basically just, just how that works at that point?
Just, I'm nodding my head, but for the public who's watching on the record, yes. We've talked about the every two to three year review and whatever happens in that interval, whether our growth skyrockets or tanks and whether the region skyrockets or tanks, all of those become variables, but to your specific hypothetical, if we found that we had a substantial reduction in our anticipated growth and we wanted to revisit our commitments to future, we would also have to revisit the trip bank. We wouldn't be just authorizing more trips when we are not authorizing the underlying development and the underlying transportation improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
A little bit more on no growth here. So, there would be impacts to the overall quality of life, just from the things I mentioned previously. We'd be out of GMA compliance. It would affect our ability to win grants ultimately and partly because we wouldn't be a Regional Growth Center amongst other things. Diminish regional relationships, as Trish mentioned, and ultimately, a community in decline. One of the things that's really clear across the state, AWC's written a bunch about this as well, is if communities are not growing in our state, they're in decline. You, you really can't stay the same and it's, it's due to the way the revenue systems are set up and a whole variety of other things. Public share. So, that's another one I thought I would address for a moment because I know this is a key concern for folks. So, I know Randy likes the first bullet a lot. It's absolutely true. So, simplified concurrency doesn't work without the public share. We've, it's something we absolutely have to step up and do sooner rather than later. We've got to, got to get it resolved and, and get moving on, building projects if that's what we're going to do and continue on with our plans. We're going to have to have significant public involvement in this and it's going to require at least one vote, depending on what form of revenues or sources you decide are, are the best, should we move forward with this for the community. The Mobility Master Plan, it's a council goal, 2015. It really, we see this as the vehicle for resolving this issue. You've got a list of projects, you've got a 300-plus million dollar plan, you have growth targets. If you, if you approve this package, you're going to have things in ordinance and once we address the public share, we'll be good to go, but to figure out how to do that, we're going to really need a process, first here at the council, then out with the community. We see the Mobility Master Plan linking all of these different things together as the opportunity to do that and to truly have commitment from all of you and then commitment from the community that this is the right direction for all of us. And if that's not the case, either here at the council or out in the community at either, either step of the way, then we'll be back here and we're going to have to talk about level of service, we're going to have to talk about growth plans, we're going to have to reassess one way or another because we, we cannot continue on without being fully committed to the plan, either this plan or a different plan. So, quick moment on building projects. There's been a little bit of talk out there about the city not building projects and I just want to remind everybody, we've been around since 1892. Almost started to feel like a beer commercial when I was putting this together for some reason, but Budweiser Clydesdale should come flying by or something, but, you know, 123 years and everything that's here in this community, we had a hand in it being built. We either built it or we oversaw somebody else building it and so, we're very confident that if we have things in place, we have funding, which we haven't had in the past, we have a solid plan and we have community commitment behind it, we'll do our jobs. We're professionals, we're here to build stuff, we're here to make the community go, we're here to serve you and we will get it done. This is really the first phase of the, the funding for the Central Plan and where we're headed in the community's vision and the public portion of that is yet to come, the public share is yet to come, but that would be the next process and this is also a significant portion of the plan. The Mobility Master Plan will put the final pieces into all this and provide some clarity on prioritization, but really, the list of projects is all there. It will change over time and we'll mention that, every two to three years, we're going to update the model and the result of that will be some tweaks and some, some alterations based upon the development we've seen, what's happened in real time. But I remind you, your votes represent the community commitment, at least right here and they did on the Central Plan as well. And each step of the way, we're checking in with you as the representatives of the community to see if we're, we're dialed in correctly and we're, at least we're recommending we go with this. And so, the Mobility Master Plan is really where it comes together. That's the last bullet.
Can I make a comment? So, when you were talking before about growth, so, I support, I supported the Central Siquah Plan and I still do, but I didn't support it because growth is inevitable and you have to have growth. The Central Siquah Plan addressed a number of things in the city that I, just speaking personally, I, I see benefit to like, you know, seeing the higher housing targets while keeping the commercial targets the same or, we're partially in an effort to address things that I'm concerned with, but I, I do worry that we need to, I think, pursue this from the idea that we have made these commitments and we're going to go about achieving those commitments, but some of what you just said was sort of like, it's always going to be this way. I mean, I just, I look at Mercer Island. Mercer Island has had essentially the same population for 30 years, so, you don't have to grow. We are doing that because we see a reason to do so, but you know, the next time targets come around, we as a city may push back, right? We may say, we have done a yeoman's job of absorbing a lot of growth for 20-plus years and so, I just want to make sure that, I mean, none of us will be on the council in 20 years, likely, and, but I, I just think it's important to understand, the Central Siquah Plan came about at a certain time for a certain set of reasons and it isn't because we have to always accept tons of new growth, because like I said, Mercer Island is a wonderful place to live and they have not stalled out because they've had the same population for 30 years and we will eventually get there, right? We will get to a point where we won't want to grow anymore and, and so, you will slowly start to see carnation in Duval and Snookalmie and North Bend fill in, but they will fill in much more slowly because of the, the numbers that we have taken on as a city and because of the growth management that this metropolitan area has. So, I just, it's not going to change what we do here today, but I just want to make it really clear, we chose what we did for the Central Siquah Plan for a real specific set of reasons, not because we had to, but because it, we thought it would move the city in, in a direction that we liked.
Thank you. Anything else on this one? Okay. So, bottom line, this is just to recap of really what we've been talking about tonight. Transportation is the highest priority in the community. We talked about that right off, off the bat. Regional growth is a really significant factor. It's driving congestion more than our own growth. We're committed to growing, at least at this point. There are no feasible options for these regional trips, pass-through trips, whatever we want to call them, but the trips that do not end or start here, for them to pay their fair share. There are some options, but nothing really feasible that I think the council probably wants to discuss. We're asking our own growth to pay its We're asking our own growth to pay its fair share. That's a big part of this proposal. That's really what impact fees are about. This plan's been studied extensively. We believe it's balanced, we think we've really worked it through with you. And we need your continued commitment at this point if we want to move forward in this direction. What's next? So next is next week potentially, adopting the amendments in front of you. Then the Mobility Master Plan process, getting a 2015 council goal, and then building projects. And delivering the vision. Questions?
I have a question. I'm going to find a slide. You, on your slide on what if no growth? Right there. Not an option, already vested development. Just to make sure everybody's on the same page, let's, I want to make sure we, I have the correct and we all have the correct understanding of this definition of vested development. I know we've talked about it before, but I don't think it hurts to hear it again. So could you, you know, there's, there are, there are development agreements?
Correct.
There are projects that are currently in the pipeline. But could you just kind of, you know, put some more color on what it means to have a vested, you know, these vested trips, I think what we're talking about? Or is it vested dwelling units or vested jobs?
My, yeah, there are a whole variety of things and the team will probably chime in here as well. But my specific reference here, and it's likely broader, was the development agreements the city has. We're contractually obligated, we've sat down with the developer, we've approved it. And unless both parties want to mutually agree to something else, we've committed ourselves to allowing certain types of development in certain locations in the city. And that represents, as I mentioned earlier, more than half of our total future growth that we have out there in the forecast. So that's a significant part of it. Randy, Dave, anything further to add?
I think you've summed it up well. Going back to the data that Torsten shared with us in one of his slide shows about the trips that were internal and external and where they were coming from and how many trips. And there were about 30,000, 29,000 and some odd trips. And we discovered that about 15,000 of those, 25,000 are trips that you've already committed to. You've committed to the trips because you've already committed to the development. That means the development isn't there now. This is future growth that's going to come from specific organizations that you've entered into contracts with. You've agreed that their proposed development is in a place you want, of the style and level that you want. And they're required under the old mitigation to do some mitigation. And so they're contracted for that. It isn't their fault and it isn't your fault that we didn't know before the Central Issaquah Plan that it was going to be a dramatically different set of projects with a higher price tag and therefore a different share that they could have been asked to pay. They didn't know it, we didn't know it, nobody got away free. We have a new look at what it's going to take to sustain the level of growth that we now understand is coming your way. And one of the numbers that we've all gotten real used to is the 119 million dollar share that's associated as, we call it the city share, but it's the city share because it's the amount linked to that contracted development that's been approved that exceeds the commitment they've made to us to pay. And it isn't because they got a break, it's because we understood we had a much lower project cost. I think I can perhaps use some new vocabulary to put a better understanding on some old information for you. If you took that 119 million dollars and divided it by the 15,000 trips that are associated with that, we're talking about 7,000, $7,500 a trip. Well, if you look at the amount that we've calculated for the impact fees and bicycle pedestrian mitigation fees for new development that doesn't have a contract with us already, that's within a couple hundred dollars of what new development will pay. So if we had known before we entered into those agreements, that's what it would cost now, we would have asked old development to contract for that. We didn't. So now it's become our share and it's our obligation to make sure that we have those projects funded to sustain the level of service that you want. That's why this has become a really complex conversation because it isn't just as simple as grow or don't grow or expensive or not expensive or level of service good or bad. You start playing with any one of those and it affects the others.
Randy, can I ask you a question? The 119 million that you mentioned, you mentioned that that was the city's, the city's share of the contracted growth that is above and beyond. Is it all attributed to that or is it some of that attributed to artificially low impact fees? And other?
Yeah, I think actually we're trying to say the same thing with different words. I would agree that they weren't, I wouldn't say that they were artificially low. They were low because I developed those fees and Torsten helped me do it back eight years ago. And at that time, it was the entire list of projects for the entire amount of growth that you thought was coming your way, using methods very similar to what we're using here. But because it was a much smaller project list, it was a much smaller fee.
We haven't had only contract growth. I mean, haven't we had other growth? Some of the growth we've had has not been development agreement related growth. So I'm having trouble with the 119 million all being attributed to contract growth.
119 million, hang on a second. You don't have all the other PowerPoints loaded up, do you?
Don't.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, I can do a short version from a distance and we'll see if it rings a bell. Yeah. So we had the slides that had the little, here's the total and here's how it breaks out, internal and external, and here's the internal piece and how much is vested and not vested. And that's the slide I'm referring to. And I accept that nobody can read it, I can hardly read it from, it's right under my nose. But it is that one that we had in the December.
Eight.
Okay, so it's broken.
December 8th session.
So it's broken down more, it's broken down into 119 and other, there's more than?
Correct.
Okay, I'll just go back and look at it, thanks.
Page 87 in the packet?
Mm-hmm.
On what do you think, Dave? Look like it.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay.
But I'm not, I want to make sure I understand that because the way you just characterized the question, Stacy, I'm not sure I understood that. It's not that the share is driven by contracted growth. We can't say that, I don't think that's.
But that's what I heard.
Yeah, but that's, that's not what I heard.
Okay.
So, yeah, maybe if we could find that. We started off, this is just the traffic piece, not the non-motorized. And we started off with a total cost of about 255 million dollars. This is in multiple documents. It's in, for example, primarily in the rate study for the new impact fees. And it is the basis for model run number three, which gets us the level of service, which is a weighted average of D, but six intersections at E or F. And so given that assumption of the growth that you've got, which we certainly have had some conversation about, whether we're supposed to assume that, but we started this taking the Central Issaquah Plan as a given. If we continue to assume that for this conversation, not as a sales pitch, just how did we get there? And if you assume that that growth is properly loaded in an updated traffic model, updated the traffic model. And if we tried to solve all the problems and it was prohibitively expensive and so we asked for permission to get rid of some TIP projects that were not helping level of service and to get rid of some projects that were prohibitively expensive, we got down to model run number three. So that's the 255 million dollar cost, thank you, Dave.
Is that it?
And so we subtracted two things from the top, $6 million worth of existing deficiencies that we cannot charge to any new development, that has to be a city share. And then we subtracted $26 million in commitments from other development, including all other development, Rowley, for example, new other development that you've approved, Costco, okay? They're all in there. And clearly, as you recall from the Costco agreement, most of that money is from the more recent Costco agreement because it's based on the most recent cost per trip. We've got $223 million left that we have to figure out how to pay for. And of that, $41 million is associated with external trips. And since we don't have a cash register sitting outside their new development, we own that. That becomes part of the city share. Or as it's euphemistically called up there, other funding. And it could be other funding if we had more grants, okay? And we talked in the funding strategies about how we actually have a substantial over 80 million dollars worth of grant estimate towards that total. Internal side, these are the trips where there's at least one trip end generated in Issaquah. And of those, 182 million dollars worth of costs, that's what splits down below that into 64 million on the left and 119 on the right. The 64 million is the amount that we can collect from and estimate we will get from the new impact fee if you approve it because it's charging the full amount to development that has not yet occurred and is not under contract to occur. It's not vested is the phrase we've all used with each other. Other funds side, that 119 million dollars, that's the portion that's associated with the vested development, the development that's already been approved by contracts that we entered into as long ago as Rowley and as recently as Costco. Now, some of those trips are regional, okay? They come into, they become an internal trip where they land here, but they started outside of the city. That's why it isn't literally true to say that, oh, the external trips are the only regional trips. They're not. They're the through regional trips. But the internal end of a trip that started and comes to work here or that started here because it lives here and goes to work somewhere else, that's part of our other fund's share.
Can I pull up any questions?
Hold on, please. Then Mary Lou.
Okay, Randy, to help me find a, an amount, there are a certain number of projects in the pipeline that will pay an old currency fee. So it's not like they're paying nothing.
Correct.
So where is, are they part of the 64?
No, they're actually part of the 26 way up at the top.
Okay.
We took them off the top.
That's, that's part of the commitments, okay, thank you. And the difference between what they are paying, which is in the 26, and what they, we now know they should have paid or could have paid or what we wish they paid is in the 119.
Correct. The two combined would be the total.
Mary Lou?
Sort of along the same line. If I were a resident watching this at home, and there's probably some, and I could follow my way all the way through this chart, and that brings the number down a little bit. This is so complicated. Simply tell me what the 119 is. If you had to break it into a pie chart and say, some of it's because we didn't collect enough in the 26 million worth of commitments that are booked there to pay for it, but some of it is something else. Because if I'm a taxpayer, am I looking at that going, what growth did not pay for? Or are there parts, more pieces to it than that in the 119 million?
As I tried to mention briefly earlier, some of those trips have an external trip end and an internal trip end. And what you're seeing in that 119 million is our end of it, where they land here and go to work or they leave here and go somewhere else to work. So it's not strictly development that is internal. There's some external trip ends associated with that. But it is all associated with development that we've agreed to under contract using old rates.
Let me rephrase this. If you look at the 26 million up at the top of the table and we sold that number of trips, 18,000 or 90,000 at whatever the current going rate is going to be, which is 1,000, 7,000, I can't remember. What does that pencil out to? Like, is that the majority of the 119 or part of the 119?
I think another way to think about it is to add the 26 and the 119 together. That's 145, okay? That's the total of the trips that are neither external nor are they coming from future development. And of that 145, we've got a commitment of 26 million and the other 119 million is not coming from that development we contracted with because they didn't know and we didn't know that we were going to have much bigger transportation needs.
Still doesn't quite get it what I, from a resident's point of view, would I be trying to figure out? So whether the trip starts in town, doesn't start in town, is that us not charging enough for a 15-year period that we ended up with, we now have to find 119? Or is it a combination of things that make up the 119? The little bit of it is the disparity between what we were charging and what we're going to charge. But there are other components or is that 119 just a growth number just from growth? Not from anything else but growth and we didn't fund it over the last 10 years? Is that where that came from?
As long as we can agree that the fact that we didn't fund it isn't a finger pointing activity? They didn't rob us and steal us blind, we didn't give away the farm, we didn't intentionally under calculate. It was the best data that we knew eight years ago. And so they entered into contracts and we willingly entered into those same contracts based on those old rates. If that's the definition of we didn't fund it, then I would agree, the whole 119 million is that difference. That's why I said a few minutes ago, if you took the 119 million and divided it by the 15,000 trips that are associated with that, it's within a couple hundred dollars a trip of what we're proposing to charge new development. If we could now go back and charge them in the future, if they didn't have those contracts, then they would have to pay that same amount and it would pay for all of that.
All right. So it's the 119 plus 26. It's the balance. The 119 is the balance.
The 119 and 26 is kind of the, the growth share. The 119 and the 41.
Is the piece.
That the city has to pay for. Because we don't have to pay for the 26. That's why it's green on this chart and it's not yellow. Green is development paying, yellow is somebody else, which means we're in the lead.
Yeah, but I'm just searching for that same thing, you know, starting with Stacy's characterization and then what Mary Lou just went through is like, there is, there. We, you know, we had plans, we engaged organizations with development goals and objectives. We reached agreement and we used the accounting available to us at that time. And with the, with the factors we're now using, growth targets for example, we have a new, we use a different, we have new numbers, the accounting. And the 119 is the balance of our share using the new accounting. So I, so I, so I'm just trying to get it straight in my mind. I think I'm getting, we'll go back to what Stacy said, is that if, if growth, the existing vested growth really in the new accounting has a share of 145, there's still 119 that we have to account for.
Right.
Okay.
They're paying about 20%.
Okay.
Randy, can I ask you another question? So is this unusual? So we, a city embarks on this exercise and we get, I mean, I think of concurrency and impact fees and like, you know, it's kind of constantly on the table as, you know, you're always updating, playing a little bit of catch up. Projects get more expensive, you know, you agreed to some sort of growth years ago under some contract. Now we're looking at this some years later, the projects that are included in these figures are more expensive than they were several years ago. And there's a, mostly to folks watching at home, sometimes an element of surprise and that's, well, those are large numbers. And how do things get away, get away from them, you know, those people on TV? And so I, I mean, and you've done a lot of work, you know, for many, many years in the area. And so how, I mean, this exercise that we're going through, how unusual is it for a city to, you've got this, you know, large share that you need to figure out a way to pay for yourself because of A through Z? you've got this, you know, large share that you need to figure out a way to pay for yourself because of A through Z?
It's not very typical. I wouldn't call it extraordinary or unique, or you're the only city. But there certainly is not a large number of Eastern Washington, Central Puget Sound cities that are in the same situation you are that such a large percentage of your future development has already been spoken for contractually.
And it's because of the, you're thinking in your experience, because of the D, development agreements?
Yes. You know, and, and why and how those got entered into, you'd have to ask the applicants why they proposed and why they thought it was in their business interest to contract for those numbers. Maybe they thought they were high at the time. Maybe they thought it was a bargain. We can't get inside their heads. We know that, uh, as a city government, as a whole, administration and council together, collectively approving those development agreements, they made sense at the time to the people who were in office at the time. I think that we have a great track record of people of goodwill occupying those offices. So I don't think it's, I don't hear anybody doing any finger-pointing, and I don't think it's useful to.
Sure.
But, but we certainly have seen a much more substantial, statistically substantial change in growth and in the cost of projects happened to Issaquah than has happened in other communities relative to the amount of growth that had been previously contracted.
Interesting. Thank you.
Mary Lou, then Nina?
Um, I'll also ask a question based on your experience. It seems to me that Issaquah has really tried hard to be forward-thinking and to plan where we want the growth. And I think in twenty, thirty years, it's going to be magnificent. But I feel now that we're in an interesting position of where we're getting ready to make big decisions, and there's a lot of things that can make you uncomfortable about this. Are there other things about Issaquah, based on your experience with other jurisdictions, that might explain why we ended up where we ended up? For example, we've signed development agreements because obviously there are large developers who believe this is the place to be. I mean, I, other cities aren't necessarily getting that, but we, we have it. They wanted to come here, and we sat down and talked to them. So when you compare our city to other cities, are there other factors that have sort of put us in this spot where we're all kind of squirming a bit, but you know what, it makes sense? Because Issaquah is unique, because it's different how from these other cities? That don't have the DAs, that don't have the committed, uh, development proposals already coming?
So you might remember one of my earlier presentations to you. Reluctantly went down the road of comparing our proposed impact fees to those in other communities. And I insisted on, and you were kind enough to let me deliver my sermon, which is, please don't go there, because there's no way to compare any two cities. And I'm reminding you of that previous speech because I'm about to give it again. Um, but I'm just going to say, remember that speech? Ditto. I won't give you the whole speech. I can't give you an answer that says, oh, here's what's different about Issaquah, because everything is different about Issaquah. But it's not because you're different than eighty other cities that are all identical to each other. It's that all eighty-one cities are wildly different than each other in every way, shape, and form. Charlie mentioned in one of his slides, the, the geography. We've got mountains. We've got a lake. Well, we're not the only one with mountains and a lake, but we're also have a huge pass-through traffic. We've got a major interstate freeway and other regional transportation facilities. And then our school system, housing stock, people that you are. You, you know, people like to live here. You're good neighbors. Um, you could go on. And at the end of it, I would wind up saying what I'll just say now. I'm unable to answer your question because I can't zero in on a couple of key components, and that's it. That's why that happened. I would, if I could. I don't have that ability.
Nina?
I, I have two things. I'm going to want to go off of what Stacy and Mary Lou have said. And also, we've said earlier that, um, this, the level of discomfort that, that I feel knowing the city obligation that we're facing. Uh, you know, well, when did that, when you, when you're traveling on the path, when did that happen, and how many undos can I, you know, how many control Zs can I do to get back to where I don't owe that money? And, uh, and we talk about when we made commitments and which things could be undone. And one of the things along the process, and I'm just going to try to summarize what I understand in the, without misleading anybody, but because I think I understand it, is that when part of the step is, um, updating the amounts, the other part is how we charge the fees and going from, um, I wish I could remember the terms, but going to the simplified plan. And it seems like it's the simplified plan that creates the burden, the obligation, the liability that we're saying, we're going to do all this. That there's an all of this to do, rather than when a, a new development comes in and says, hey, we're going to do this much, and we're going to say, oh, there's an impact and it costs this much. How does these, let me put it this way. How does the simplified, and I'm not saying we're going to erase that part, but how does the simplified create the obligation or a liability?
Um, I see it through a different lens. Um, I don't think that simplifying concurrency and creating a trip bank and a substantial fee that goes along with that trip bank has caused the cost of the fees to be high.
Oh, that's what I mean.
Okay. Try again.
I mean, that instead of one development coming forward and saying, I'm going to make impacts, how much does it cost? We're planning what all the growth will be. We're being very strategic and holistic, and then we're dividing it up.
But eight years ago, when I did your transportation impact fee, we had a list of projects costing tens of millions of dollars that were based on that comp plan's version of all the growth you were going to get. And it was all the transportation projects we thought you were going to need, and we came up with a fee. Um, I would remind you that that fee got cut in half within a year because one of the biggest projects that was contributing to it was taken off the, the table for a variety of perfectly good reasons. But it turns out, even if that project wasn't the right project, the amount of money for it probably should have been retained, and that was the bypass. Okay? So maybe we don't want the bypass. Maybe we don't need the bypass. But we needed the capacity somewhere in the system. And after we'd done all the modeling and all the calculations, we simply went back and removed it. But we didn't replace it with anything else.
So Nina, is your question whether the simplified concurrency somehow created deficiencies?
No.
Okay.
Uh, uh, what I'm, if, could we just increase the fee? Could we just not say we're doing simplified, and our fees were too low before, and now they're going to be this much? Uh, and, and how would that change how much the city's share is? Is there, I'm not trying to rewrite it. I'm just trying to identify, when did it, when did this happen?
Randy, Randy, if I, if I may, I, I think for me, if I'm listening to your question carefully, the aha moment for me was probably two thousand and thirteen when, you know, I was rela, still relatively new on the council. And our concurrency is not tied to our strategic plan for how we want to grow and manage our city. I couldn't believe that. It knocked me out of my chair. Uh, there was no coupling between our strategic plan and the actual mitigation that development and growth was contributing to the city. And, and that's the way I view this now, is that we have a strategic plan. And, and, and we have mapped concurrency to, in a way, to help us actually execute that plan. That's the way, and I, that might be an oversimplification, but that's the one way I view this.
Yeah.
So I cut you off, Randy. I apologize.
No, I, I, I think your way of expressing it is excellent. Um, try and give a similar answer from a different direction, but it's, it's looking at the same picture and just focusing on a different part of the, the picture. If we didn't change concurrency at all, and we required new development from this day forward, to continue to come in and turn in big traffic studies and send their traffic model to our traffic modeler, and my modeler can beat up your modeler, and then we agree on five intersections that are broken, and three of them they caused to be broken, and we make them mitigate, but the level of their mitigation is a turn lane or an acceleration lane, that's it. The only defense we would have left is to come forward with our new impact fee and say, okay, that's how you do concurrency, and it's complicated and expensive, but you still owe us these new, much higher impact fees because we have determined, even though we've now separated it from concurrency, we've determined that we still need those transportation improvements. And what we really want you to do is to pay our full mitigation fee and in addition mitigate specific intersections that you might break.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think we're at a point where we can, I want to go on to the next phase of the meeting. And, um, a lot of good questions.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Very brief. We just, one thing we talked about this last time, we didn't have the answer, and I looked it up, was residential units. I just wanted to contribute that.
Share that with me. Yeah, sure.
We were talking about a growth rate of fifty-five hundred under the Growth Management Act in seventy-seven fifty for the Regional Growth Center. In the two thousand and ten census, the housing units in Issaquah were thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-one. And I, I couldn't quickly find on my phone what the two thousand and fourteen update was. I know there's one out there, but I saw two thousand and thirteen, a population estimate update. It was a ten percent increase. So if you extrapolate, we have about fifteen thousand residential units in Issaquah Highlands. I don't have the, I'm, I'm making some triangulations to get to that number, but if that doesn't sound reasonable to you, that helps give the basis of what the five thousand growth is going on top of. We know.
You meant citywide, right?
Citywide.
I might have something to add to that.
Do you have something better? Because that was just an unanswered question. I want to get up there.
This is, you know, earlier we had that table. What is the fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty units shown in that bar chart? And that comes out of the comprehensive plan that.
Okay. So it's how many?
Fourteen thousand, six forty is the total units as of May thirteen.
That was pretty close.
I know you were.
That's why we did that comparison table of the comp plan to the model to demonstrate that while they weren't identical, they were within a few hundred of each other so we could go forward.
That's bar chart we were talking about.
Yes.
That fourteen thousand.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. You know, it's good to explore these. It's, um, I appreciate that everyone recognizes that we don't take any of our decisions and our upcoming votes lightly, and it is critical, and it's our obligation to really vet these and have a good understanding. Because voting out of convenience is, 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 we're not asked to do that. We are asked to, to really understand and study and, and, and make a decision based upon, you know, empirical data and our own assessment and, and judgment and listening to others. So I appreciate that. Um, the next thing I wanted to do was there, in the packet, there are many sections, but there are the actual changes themselves. Uh, in an earlier, um, yeah, in the earlier, uh, the actual action will be based upon some code changes and, and ordinance. Uh, and earlier there, we, at another meeting, we, uh, looked at the policy matrix. And, um, there's been some updates to that, nothing major. But I, but what I wanted to do is just give everybody an opportunity. I know, I know you've all read it and have it memorized. Uh, yeah, no, I'm not going to have a test, but no, I just want, I just want to, I just want to just go through real quickly. So, so, um, there's a lot said in there. There's, there's, there's the administration recommendation, and then there's the council kind of agreement or not, you know, most, you know, with those policy decisions. And I want to make sure that there's not any on, uh, we have, we've vetted any type of concerns. All concerns or questions that people have about that policy section of the document. It starts on page, I mean, all you have to do is look it up. It's in the, um, it's, uh, on page thirty-one where, uh, and it goes for, you know, a number of pages. It goes for about eight pages. Yeah, it's on page thirty-one of two ninety of the P, of the PDF. Now, I don't, you know, and we did, in fact, a couple meetings, a couple months ago, we went through all of these. And I just want to circle back. I just want to check in. This is, this is a, this is your, an opportunity to, to get clarification and make sure this document reflects what this council believes. Mary Lou?
Sure. First, a comment. Um, I did miss the December eighth meeting. Um, and I went back and listened to the tape. I think I have twenty-five minutes to go. It's certainly a very long meeting. But I think this policy document, the way it's organized, is excellent. I found, I just wanted to, the comment is that I just wanted to tell staff that there's a lot of policy items that showed up in this decision that we're going to make, and the way it's organized here and used as a tool in your discussion last time, I found very helpful. Also, I listened to your conversation and looked at all of the, the document as well as whether or not it was recommended by the majority of council or not. And I didn't have any questions or anything to ask about it. I was in agreement, more or less, with what you guys landed on last time.
Okay, thank you for that. Nina?
Uh, thank you. On page thirty-two, section C, where it says growth in Issaquah, just one observation. It's not a complaint. It's an observation number two. Uh, the way that that policy says, "Regular traffic model updates every two to three years, comma, as needed," uh, is interestingly phrased because what I was concerned when I read this is that it might fall into the perpetual non-updated condition. But, uh, I'm jumping ahead when I say that I was glad to see some revisions in the code. It put the words "shall." So I know we're not talking about code right now, but this does not indicate how the code was, was updated. It might be nice to say so. Just a thought.
Okay. Okay, but yeah, but the code does reflect this policy and also, I mean, you're, you're satisfied with that.
Well, the code is better than this.
Right, right. Okay, all right. Josh?
Um, in section J, on the changes of use, we had a visit from a representative from Master Builders at the infrastructure meeting. He had, uh, an interesting hypothetical at the last meeting, and I didn't capture all the details of it, but I'm hoping that one of you might have. And I think we said that perhaps that could be addressed at tonight's meeting. It, it had to do with change of use situation where he used the landing and rent-in as an example, where the developer just was unable to get that type of retail or housing or whatever it is they were trying to build because of economic conditions. And so he was concerned that something would, would sit vacant for a period of time through no fault of the developer's own, and then they'd be doubly hit with impact fees. And I'm, I'm probably butchering his hypothetical, but it was, it was something that we hadn't really touched on in that change of use.
Actually, I think you did a, a fine job of summarizing what we also heard him say. So we all heard that, whether that's exactly what he said or not. Um, we took that back as a team and talked about it. And we reminded ourselves that the code, as we've got it framed right now for your adoption, continues the, um, the one-year period in which a building can be vacant. And within that first three hundred and sixty-four days, we'll have to go forward and not be required to pay any fees. And that if it is simply a change of use of an existing building, it's not going to pay to change the fees. We heard the concern that was expressed. And on reflection, our, um, conclusion was, for your consideration, that it's really not the city's business to try and anticipate every possible risk-taking activity in the private sector and the losses that they might incur, and that it might be sad for them and sad for our local economy if a building sits empty for two or three or five years. But simply extending the deadline by which that particular kind of a development could then escape paying any fees didn't seem to be warranted by public policy. And it further burdened, would either further burden the city to pay for that difference or give up that, that amount of money. Or, or would put us in a position of going back and then charging for changes of use, which we've all taken for your comments, that we want to get out of that business because we have not been paying people back when they've had a reduction in trips. So that, that's a long-winded, we have intentionally not offered you the Master Builders requested change.
Appreciate that.
Do you have any other questions, Josh?
That, that was it on that topic. I just wanted to follow up from our meeting discussion.
Yeah, and, and I have, um, I, I was, of course, at the committee, and I, my memory is just a little bit different. You know, Josh, I, I don't recall there being a claim of no fault of their own. I think this idea that, you know, if somebody's business speculation didn't pan out, that like, that's no fault and we should have, we shouldn't, I mean, because I, because I think the, the, the code as we're considering right now, if twelve months go by, and then there is a change of use, there is a change of use, then, you know, somebody's seen something a little bit different and they're going to make an investment into that property. So, so I think, you know, that was just, you know, and so I, I do, I do agree with this. I think there's, with the, the vacant for a year, it's, we're not inventing that type of measure. It's an adopted policy already. And so, yeah, right, when I heard that, I thought, listen, if it doesn't work out and then somebody, some, a year later wants to change the use, an existing owner, and it's vacant for a year, finishes, gets that building occupied, and it's not a change of use, there's no impact.
Can I also remind council that that one-year period is not just a whim, it's not a political, gosh, well, we think that's fair, and beyond a year is too long, and less than a year is about right. It's actually based on the technology and the, and the methodology underlying our traffic modeling. Because we update the traffic counts on a regular basis, so we know the trips are coming out of development that's occupied and are not coming out of vacant development. And when we accumulate our quarterly counts on an annual basis, if the property's been vacant for a whole year, our annual summary then says, there wasn't any traffic coming out of there. And so we no longer had to account for what happened at local intersections and on our streets. Now, if somebody comes along after that year and proposes to put traffic coming out of that same driveway, that's new traffic to us. And so that's why we feel they need to contribute.
Okay. Mary Lou?
I can wait until you've gone all around.
Yeah, thank you. Told you. Did you have anything in this section? Stacy, did you? Okay, Mary Lou, thank you.
So one question I did forget, but just got reminded of, was J five, certain projects with established budget in the permit pipeline may be grandfathered under the existing fees. So I know there's been some, it's written in the draft ordinance and it's written in the regu, draft regulations. But if we have twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand trips that are either vested or in the bank to be sold, what portion of those trips is in the projects that are reflected in the current draft language? What, how many trips are dollar value or what's associated with that?
In terms of the trips, they were already excluded from the model when Torsten took into account the list of projects. These were also included in the ones that were vested.
So if the number, if the capacity that we have left is around twenty-four thousand trips, the model just dealt with, I'm just going by, maybe I've got the numbers wrong, but something that I heard earlier, I thought we have X amount invested already, and then we have eight thousand to sell approximately.
That chart up there doesn't have the trips on it, but the left green box, the sixty-four million dollar figure is about eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one trips, okay? And the other funds trip is the other fifteen thousand, totaling twenty-five thousand.
So are the trips that are covered by point five in the draft language that we have right now not included in the twenty-four thousand?
They are included in the twenty-four thousand. They are included in the fifteen thousand that are on the others.
So how many, how many trips is that?
Out of that total?
That is reflected in the current language in the draft ordinance, draft regulation.
It's like.
Like six hundred, six hundred and fifty, approximately?
Less, yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, probably more like, about five hundred.
Five hundred? And that's how many developments, projects?
Counting? Twenty-one. And the staff has done the research, and so they have a list. It's not like we're going to invite applicants to come in and go, well, would you like to be on our list? I mean, you either are or you're not.
And I, I guess I missed the part of the discussion that changed the date. So why did the time, staff, I guess, why did the, the time period allow for them to apply for a building permit, get extended?
So between the last infrastructure committee meeting and this meeting, we had a discussion with Master Builders, and we had a request from them, and had a discussion with the administration amongst all of us. And the request was for a six-month delay at the tail end of the process. We heard from Master Builders that a number of the builders, they felt their members could not get permits, building permits finalized in time, that even though we tried to create a window to help these projects in the pipeline, we weren't actually accomplishing that. And so they asked for another six months, and it's our recommendation to grant that.
What amount does that represent? What does that add? What is it? How many additional, what are we capturing additionally by adding that six months? Nothing?
Well, the difference is three.
That's the total. So the different, the estimated total impact fees that would not be collected as a result of that is three point one million?
You're a different question though, aren't you? Aren't you asking the difference between, if we didn't, do they have estimated building permit issuance dates? Like the difference between, we have, was it five, five hundred trips in the pipeline? If we extend it, all five hundred get used? If we kept it the way it is, only three hundred and fifty would get used?
I think it's the same question, it's just a matter of how you want to answer it. It's, it's, I mean, you have those trips, either they're going to pay, they're going to pay one fee or another. And so what's the, I guess, lost opportunity, so to speak, if you extend it? And you're saying three point one million?
Yes. We, we think this is a better solution than what some cities have done, which is to extend the implementation date for the entire program. Because that lets anybody new walk in the door who hasn't made any previous progress and also qualify for a delay if they can get their application in quickly enough. This targets specifically people who've already taken action. Anybody else who hasn't gotten that far, they need to face up to the new program.
Because I thought you had done a pretty good, according to what we heard before, you done, you've done a pretty good analysis of justifying which projects would be vested and not necessarily legally vested. And so just, so I'm not, I'm not convinced with a six-month delay. I have to think about that.
Just to be clear, it's not a three point four million dollar difference with the six-month delay. That's just the total amount of those projects, correct Dave? It's not the six-month delay that, that results in that. That's the total amount of impact fees that could be collected from all of those projects combined.
The delta that we don't get for all of them.
Correct. We're simply giving them an extra six months to get their building permits completed.
So is there a difference with the six-month delay?
There likely will be more projects on that list from which we do not collect. But the likelihood of us collecting a hundred percent of all of these under the new fees is, I think, very low. I think we'll see some of these come in. Yes, right.
We all understand.
Yeah, the delta's three point, three point one million between the old fees and the new fees. So if they pay, but odds are they're not going to all fit on one side of the fence or the other side of the fence. There's going to be a blend. Giving them six more months means it's more likely that more of those projects will be on the old fees than the new fees. That was, that was the request from Master Builders.
All to get on the other side.
Well, we can to give them a fair chance to get in. Didn't feel that six months was a fair chance.
In old fee numbers, they pay about a million, a little under than that. And if none of them qualified, they all pay four million, hence the difference of one point, three point one.
Naina?
Yeah, I think you just answered. So the most is three point one million, although it's possible or even likely that many of them won't get, even with the extension. And I'm, I'm glad for this discussion because this was a, something that was not clear to me early on was the magnitude of that difference between the parties who hadn't yet completed all their application processes. And since concurrency is not paid until the, the building permit, it seemed like there was a big gulf there. And when we were talking about a hundred and eighteen, and it hadn't been clear, clarified to me, I'm, I'm relieved, I don't want to say only three point one million, God forbid, but it's, it's less than I thought it was going to be. And I'm, I'm not unhappy to hear that.
To add to that, one project will probably pick up its building permit in the next week or two. That's the seventh Gilman. That's one and a half million of the three billion we're talking. Big chunk of.
Okay. Anything else about this section? Okay. Let's move on to, I want to take us down to the code amendments. Section eight starts on page ninety-three of two ninety in the PDF. This is the actual change to the code. So this is, when I said change earlier, I meant change to the code, not just changes in the document. This is what actually would be getting implemented. Now, we had an opportunity, is there, and I, I think there's a few tweaks in there. We looked at this last week and had, in committee, and had some changes. Are there's, I think there's some updates since then. So just for everyone's else's benefit at infrastructure, we had an opportunity to look at this.
Quick summary or?
Yeah, if you could, if you could, of what was changed since last week, and then.
Randy jokes that the new color is gray. It really is. It's highlighted in gray.
There it is, yep.
And the code amendments are summarized in the briefing paper, which is pages four or five of the whole packet. So I guess to start, number one, there was a request at CIC to talk about three hundred trips, that no more than three hundred trips outside the central plan, and that we codify that and really commit to that number in the code. So we've added that in, in the code here.
So, so that's a really important point. I mean, that, so this whole twenty-five hundred trip ends of, of, and I mean, I should say of the balance of eighty-four hundred. There's only three hundred of that eighty-four hundred that's not in the central area. And so projects could come along and they want to be outside the central area, and, you know, we've only got fifty trips less in the, left in the bank, and someone has a project for a hundred. Well, we can't, they can't, they're going to have to change their plans. So this is, again, it's just, it's, it's an interesting number. It shows the proportion of what we're talking about, where it is relative to the central area. Three hundred of the eighty-four hundred are, or eighty-one hundred of the eighty-four hundred are in the central area.
And can I add, we clarified for the infrastructure committee that the, another provision that we have of the fifty percent reduction in trips from the bank triggers an update. You're not applying that fifty percent to fifty percent of the three hundred. So all three hundred trips could go away, and we could still have eighty percent of our eighty-four hundred trips. We would not be triggering a new study just because those three hundred trips got used up outside the central Isiqua area.
Go ahead, Dave.
Second one is.
We're, I'm just trying to still figure out, on the online packet, is this labeled as View Agenda Bill six eight seven six, the one that has the gray revisions? Do you recall at the committee meeting, I got totally turned around on which red line we were looking at?
Yeah, it's page ninety-five of today's meeting packet, ninety-five.
We have, that's in the PDF version, and then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Folks, I look in the HTML version of exhibit attachments. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I'm just on the council work session agenda that's posted online, December eighth, HTML. There's a series of HTML links.
This is code amendments, attachment eight, code amendments in the legislative in parentheses.
Catch, they're, they're not numbered, unfortunately.
Post amendments?
Sorry, sorry to hold it up. I'm.
Go to the PDF and go to ninety-three.
I'm going to try to use the PDF then. It's just, if anyone's trying to follow along, it's, okay, now I'm on the PDF. It's two hundred and fifty-seven pages. Is that what we're working off of?
Ninety, one hundred and ninety pages?
Great.
You're looking at December eighth, we're looking at.
I don't have a paper copy here. I'm using our website that we post to the public.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, so I got my, mine in the same location, the PDF is, is right there as well.
That's what I did.
It's the same thing. It's the same document. It's just one document.
You're on page ninety-five.
Misspoke. It's not the December eighth, it's two ninety. It's the, it's today's day.
It would be on tonight's agenda. Okay. Somebody had said December. Look at the December, okay.
I blew it. My bad.
Now, now I'm with you. Two ninety.
So. So where were we? We're going to talk about change number two, fifty percent, greater guarantee in the code. I think we talked about it earlier, that right into the code, when fifty percent of the trips are no longer remaining in the trip bank, that'll automatically trigger an update of the traffic model bank. We've been seeing approximately every two to three years, so.
What page is that one on?
That is on page one eight.
Does it look like there was a change before that on ninety-nine? Are you following a different order? Page ninety-nine, there's a gray area as well about changes in building use. It's, it may be easier for us to follow it in the order that they are changed in the code.
Oh, through the code document?
Because I think most people now are looking at the code document.
Yeah.
Now you are.
Yeah, you're on page nine, if you want, yeah, on page ninety-nine, that is the change, that addresses the change of use discussion we had, that if a person is vacant more than a year, that the applicant development pays the full impact fee.
Okay.
That's on page ninety-nine.
On that one.
Yeah, Josh?
Now says the expansion of a building and a change of use after more than one year.
Correct.
And change of use didn't necessarily mean expansion of a building. In fact, I thought it was quite the opposite. It was no expansion to the building, but just a change of the existing facility.
Maybe it's the way that we're trying to build off the existing text, but it, that last sentence is in green and gray, would mean that if, if a person expands or changes the use after one year, then it is subject to this chapter, and subject to this chapter means the impact fees apply.
So I think you need an either or. Either the expansion of a building or a change of use after more than one year is subject to this chapter.
Okay, not and?
Okay, just do an, add an either or to that sentence, and it'll make exactly what you want it to say.
Gotcha. Thanks. So if we move along in order to page one oh two, in gray at the top. And you remind me that this, this was the one. This is some wording we found between.
The, the infrastructure committee actually raised the question, the concern, that we were using a trigger point, or we were using a process by which the decision, even just the analysis of whether or not we think we ought to update the impact fee studies was a council decision. And so what we've changed this to is an administration responsibility to make an evaluation and report to the council if they wish to do the update. Council still authorizes the update. We also added into this language, again, in the spirit of the, being clearer about the two to three-year time period, a specific requirement that if the administration doesn't request an earlier update, then the three-year period will automatically trigger the update. And you're going to find this language similarly used not only here for the traffic impact fee, but also for the park impact fee, and comparable language for the SEPA mitigation Nexus studies.
So as we page through that, you'll see that same language, yeah, right? So now I'm just paging through the text here.
Looking for gray?
Looking for gray.
Naina, go ahead.
Should we address these as they come by?
Sure.
So as I said earlier, I appreciate the use of the word shall for every three years. But one thing that, and it's a bigger topic, want to bring it up now, maybe it's discussed later, but in the way that we're deciding things, we have the concurrency plan here. It's ready to be adopted or not. And then during the year 2015, we're going to be working on the master mobility plan, which is going to inform the strategy. You know, this, you wonder which cart or horses or chickens or eggs or whatever. And then also, we've discussed when and whether the voter approval for the funding would happen. And I bring it up now because I just want to ask my colleagues whether they think that having the three years a minimum of revisiting this will allow us to reflect upon the results of those two major things. of revisiting this will allow us to reflect upon the results of those two major things back on this policy, or if there needs to be some other trigger, that once the master mobility plan is done, you should revisit the concurrency plan. I don't know, I'm just bringing it up because it, we do, it is very hard to, to sequence very complicated topics which each inform one another. Does that make sense?
It does, you know, there... The council can always ask for an update. This is triggering the administration just to make sure that it doesn't go longer than three years to make a recommendation. But there will, you know, compelling events based upon things that happen or don't happen, succeed or don't succeed. I mean, we always have that option available to us as a council.
Say again what you're concerned about, making sure it doesn't go, maybe minimum three years is too long?
No, I'm not saying that it is.
No, but what, what's it? Sorry, you missed it.
Oh, the, that, what is the it?
It's an update. I took it as an update.
And the, and the it is that the master mobility plan may bring forth considerations that would have changed the way we would do this code, once we get there. But that happens to be the second in sequence. We have this now, and we have that later. So how do we assure that the, okay, how about this?
Rate, are you talking about a rate study or something?
No, I'm talking about just the, the concurrency code. How do we, let me put it this way and see if this resonates. How do we make sure that the, that concurrency is the, I'll call it slave, because I hang around a computer programmer all the time, to the master mobility plan and not the other way around? How, do we know that when we get to the master mobility plan, people don't say, well, shoot, you've got this concurrency program, and you can't change that, so you have to use that as your basis? When really, I think we wanna go into the master mobility plan by saying, hey, we wanna create a full strategy, and that it would inform our concurrency.
Hi, Mike.
Go ahead, Randy.
So the particular section that we're on right now on page one nine, one oh two, since we're going through sequentially, deals with the impact fee. And as you speak about concurrency, for those of us technically inclined, we're thinking about the trip bank, that it would need to be the thing that would be updated as a result of finding out new information from the master mobility plan. And at the risk of jumping ahead and then we'll go back, page one twenty-eight actually addresses that with some new gray language. Really in trouble by the fact that this is getting shades of gray. We always use that to mean it's unclear. I may speak to Mr. Faber about not using that color in the future, but there is a provision in the middle of, of page one twenty-eight that clarifies rather more directly that if there's an update or amendment of the city's comprehensive plan, for example, as it relates to concurrency, that would trigger a required update of the trip bank.
Okay. Okay, so that's tying that together.
Right. The other thing I would agree with, with Paul about is that these deadlines, the way they're expressed here, are not later than. We must do this within three years. It doesn't prohibit or limit the council's ability or the administration's ability to move forward on an earlier schedule. This, this is meant to avoid what is happening right now, where we've gone eight years without an update.
Yeah, okay, that, that's good. Thank you.
So, just to follow up then, there's nothing really in here that talks about when the, the non-city share would get funded. And so then it, it sort of leaves that dangling out there as well. And we, we've touched on this previously in work session in terms of, all right, we're not gonna, you know, force it to go out to the voters before considering adopting this. But once it's adopted, so you have this update, and you look at your capacity, and you look at your growth model, and you look at that element of it, what seems conspicuously absent is the funding aspect, and some sort of trigger that says, if by this date, we don't have the non-city share funded to whatever extent, that number up there, you know, we have ten percent of that, fifty percent of that figured out, then maybe we need to take a look at this. And I, I, I don't know the right way to phrase that, but it just, it still troubles me, out of all of this, that we don't have the funding mechanism determined. And I, and I totally understand, we don't want to determine it now, we don't need to determine it now necessarily, but somebody's gonna have to determine it because there's just no way we can get anything done to keep up with the rate of growth if we don't have it funded. And that money's not gonna fall out of the sky, and it's certainly not gonna fall out of the Capitol dome down south. So it's gonna be up to us and our citizenry to figure out that way. And, and I don't know where in here that aspect of it is, is also considered in terms of the review process.
Can I ask, is it in here or is it in code? The burden of when you need to satisfy that by concurrency law, that you need to determine the source of funding? The timing of projects, the ten years, the six years, the...
Yeah, there's some language in the concurrency provision about funding strategies have to be in place, right? But we have a list of funding strategies. In place doesn't mean adopted, voted on by the public, and money in the bank. That, that doesn't answer Josh's point as, as to whether or not the council wishes to add to this document a self-imposed deadline, or developing the funding strategies, or something happens.
Mary Lou?
Just a, a comment back to Josh. It seems to me that, you know, we think this is a highly desirable place, and, and we wanna see all these projects built, and we wanna sell these trips and get it done. But every year, there may or may not be anybody that comes to the table to build anything and give us any money. We still have a transportation issue if nobody comes, and so we still have to do a good chunk of this anyway. So to me, it's, I'm thinking if you go all the way to the end and have this really well-thought-out, well, intricate plan on how you're going to fund or finance this, every year, you're gonna revisit this very intricate plan because we just don't know who's coming, or when they're gonna come, or what they're gonna pay. So even if nobody's coming, we still have to have the master mobility plan for the people that are already here and the congestion we already have. So I'm not as uncomfortable as you are with not knowing how we're going to get all of it. I figure we're going to do the best guess with what we know, and each year we will tweak it, but we have to be very flexible because we just don't know who's coming, or we're gonna get, or if anybody else is coming.
And if I could say, I'm, I'm not saying we have some poison pill that says, you know, this whole thing falls apart if we haven't figured out funding by date X. I'm just concerned about being able to take a look at where things stand. And maybe three years, just the, the regular three-year cycle is sufficient for that purpose. I mean, are we gonna have this out for the voters in three years? Maybe, maybe not. We don't know at this point. But it just seems like at some point, we're gonna go along this process, and some future council's gonna say, okay, we've gotta do this whether we grow or not, we've gotta have some transportation infrastructure developed, we've gotta have some park infrastructure developed. And so what happens when folks are sitting around the table in five years or ten years, and there's no additional revenue coming in? Well, there is additional revenue, but it's only a portion as paid by developers, and we're still looking, we, the city, are still looking for how we make up that gap. And, you know, how do we go back and revisit levels of service and the other types of things that lead to the inevitable conclusion that we have to come up with, you know, that much money?
I think we have to come up with the money anyway. I mean, I guess that's where I'm coming at, is it, just to me, is we, as a council, should decide whether or not we're going to support this master mobility plan, no matter what development comes. And so we're gonna go out to the public anyway. We're gonna, maybe we're not asking them for everything all at once, for sure, we're probably not. Maybe we're going to the public several times. We are, if we're committed to improving the congestion we already have, we're going out to them anyway because we already have problems, and we have to figure out how to pay for it. So I, I guess that's, I feel like you're getting hung up a little bit, and I, I'm feeling a little more comfortable that future councils are gonna deal with this the way we are. They'll just take what they're handed in a given year and do the best that they can in planning. But if we're going to fix this, we're already going out, regardless of this piece. We're already gonna go out to the public, I think.
Naina?
I think I understand what you're saying, Josh, and share some of your concerns. And one of it is that when we get around to voting on this policy, there will be this expected long-term obligation that comes in if, if everything happens. And how could we protect the future planning with some interim steps that may inform or prepare future city populations and councils so that they don't get backed up? And one thing I just brought up a moment ago is this expiration date of the developer's contribution. If we don't build the concurrency, we have to refund. There isn't, there's an expiration date that makes sure, that is supposed to assure that the project actually gets done? And then there are some ramifications if it does not.
So what the law requires for the impact fee is that we spend each dollar that we receive within ten years. It's not a requirement that we complete the whole two-hundred-and-fifty-five million dollar project in ten years.
Is there a requirement that we, that the other funding portion be spent?
Not in the statute.
Aha, so it's just that we spend the impact fee?
Correct.
So then that liability has, that's a little less burden than what I was thinking it might be. You know, I guess one thing that I was thinking about, Josh, when you were talking about this, is that we have some goals and objectives in affordable housing. And one way that we have addressed that is we have instituted something about getting a report card now. We wanna know what our status is, you know, where do we stand today? And we've tried to set up something so that there'd be a regular reporting, so that we wouldn't be surprised by the, oops, you're two-hundred million behind, or whatever. I think that's what you're getting at, or maybe something like that.
Yeah, Mike, I, I agree. It's unthinkable to me that there'd be any, oops, we took our eye off the ball. I just think that's unthinkable. And we have already committed ourselves, I think, taking this action with the master mobility plan to put a strategic plan in place on how to go about this there. And I think, so, you know, two thousand and fifteen is now. It's, it is one of our goals, and I, I, I just don't have that concern that we're gonna take our eye off the ball. I mean, this is, but what we don't, and I think what's different, and what I'm looking forward from, from, and, from the master mobility plan, is, is having a strategy around funding. We've had a list of projects, we've known what their cost, we've had planned growth in our, in our comprehensive plan, but we never really had a plan, we've never had a plan for instance, how we are going to address this, what particular tools and levers and actions, not only, and to me, we've been talking, you know, you know, at some point, there may be, there will be an ask of our public. But we've talked about this before. We have a strategy about, you know, trying to influence the, you know, Olympia to give us more options, for example. So, you know, but do we, I mean, do we have the right strategy? Do we have a complete strategy? Master mobility plan goes beyond just concurrency. We wanna look at parking, you know, that's, you know, and where is that gonna come from? It has the opportunity to look at mobility-related issues beyond growth impacted as well. It could be some of those regional corridors. So what's our strategy of perhaps working regionally or with nearby jurisdictions on some of these other areas? So, so the scope of that, so, and so I'm, my sense is, and, and Naina, to your question, who's the master and who's the slave? Concurrenty is about addressing impacts due to growth. And but, and that's, but that is not the full, that is not the only issue when it comes to mobility that we have here within Issaquah. And it also doesn't have, as you rightly point out, and I don't think it should be within the ordinance. I don't believe that there should be, or even within the code, any details. To me, it's about what we're gonna do about funding. To us, to me, that's a work plan that we establish based upon, you know, the, the, yeah, developing a master plan. So I don't, I'm not, I don't, codifying what we might do about and when we might do funding, I don't think is, I don't think it's necessary. I, I think it would be, I don't know, unprecedented.
It's, it's not required in the statute. Other cities don't have, they certainly don't have the poison pill version, and they don't even have self-imposed deadlines. They understand that the nature of outside funding changes, the natures of councils changes, and that there's always that group that's the ultimate source of pressure for you, that's your constituents. At some point, they get fed up with the transportation congestion enough to be willing to pay for the improvements, or if a majority of them decline it, then the rest of them have to live with the fact that we've just bought congestion instead of paying for it.
So, so you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, well, my, my follow-up in that is, I guess I'm concerned with the notion that our citizens are gonna get fed up enough that they want to improve transportation because I'm hoping that we can address that before they get fed up. And, and it feels like we need to start now and start funding because as Mary Lou correctly points out, even if nobody buys a single trip from the bank, we are already behind.
Absolutely.
So...
We know we have commitment.
Sooner we begin funding and funding mechanism, and I'm assuming then that, that the master mobility plan is step A in driving us towards that funding mechanism, although we've been told through this process, what are the, the four or five available likely choices? Maybe we'll learn something new in the, in the mobility plan. But my hope is that at the end of that master mobility plan, we will then be prepared to move forward on a funding package because by the time it gets approved and taxes get collected and you start design before you get to build, nothing's gonna get built to improve our infrastructure for quite a while, and every year we wait is another year down the chain. That's all.
Great.
So I haven't spoken to this yet.
Totally.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're gonna go away, when this process ends, this month, this month or next month, I don't think we're gonna go away and, and pat ourselves on the back, and then four or five years from now say, hey, hey, didn't we, didn't we talk about, didn't we have to come up with like a hundred-and-twenty million bucks? I mean, this is a, this is a, okay, we have gotten ourselves behind the eight ball. First thing you figure out is how far behind the eight ball are you? And then you figure out what you're gonna do to get out from behind the eight ball. And so this is a step in that. And, and I don't feel that we need to put in any artificial constructs because we are just naturally gonna be moving further along towards addressing this issue. There is not any council in the next number of years that isn't gonna have this front and center as an important issue. So, so I, I, I don't wanna add any, any language that, that would, I don't think we need artificial constructs to understand that we need to keep working this issue.
All right, thank you, Tola. So I think everybody's had a chance to comment on that topic. Let's go back to the actual code, the language in the ordinance. Are there any other questions or highlights that you, that, from the council, or highlights from the staff?
Or just about all the code amendments that are in here?
For the last change, yes.
Make sure on the change of use one, it's in two places. It's also in the park impact fees. I just wanna point that out in case, okay.
Okay. So let's then move on to the last portion, which lets, it is the, the actual ordinance itself. It starts on page one thirty-nine of the PDF of today's meeting packet, that being January twelfth, two thousand and...
It's not in track changes, so are we gonna get a highlight, or has nothing really changed?
Yes.
And nothing has really changed.
There's only one change, and that's on page one forty-four. And I thought of doing track changes, apologies I didn't.
That's okay, one change.
It's section nine that talks about the six-month shift in deadline date of the pipeline projects. Two dates changed. That summary, I can give you more, but that's, that's it there. That's it.
So this, so this, so it hasn't changed since?
Other changes.
Other changes, but that one.
But in general, there's changes, but then there's the actual language in question. So, or concerns, clarifications. Josh, you have one?
You, you might have mentioned this earlier. Where was the part about the, the stuff, all the trips being in the central area except for three hundred? What section? You mentioned that earlier, and then I just, I totally missed it.
Back in the code, we're not...
Oh, it's in the code, I'm sorry.
We can go back there just to answer your question, because we moved to the ordinance of...
Yep, it's on...
My colleague is struggling.
It's on, he's, he's doing good here. It's one twenty-eight, one twenty-eight of two ninety.
That's on the code section.
Can you give me the section number, Dave?
Eighteen point fifteen point two forty-five. The, in gray, we added, second sentence, up to three hundred trips may occur outside of the central Issaquah plan boundary.
And I recall in committee, we had talked about having some cross-reference. So is that sufficient, legally sufficient or otherwise, to ensure that when we use the word central Issaquah plan boundary? to ensure that when we use the word "central Issaquah Plan boundary", we are referring to the adopted plan that was adopted on X date and the, you know?
So I thought of that. I checked, and the central plan has a boundary in the central Issaquah Plan document saying here is the central Issaquah Plan boundary. But put in a reference to adopted on X date under ordinance. Q R Z and...
All right. I leave that to our city legal minds, but I always prefer more clarification and things like that so that there's less potential for confusion. So. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll add that.
Okay. So back to the ordinance. Any, so any requested language changes or questions or clarifications? Okay, not seeing any. At this point, I was going to ask if any member of the audience wanted to make any comments, but the only gentleman who was here left. So, that's all we had tonight. Anybody else, anybody wanna make a speech?
A point of order?
Josh wants to make a speech.
I don't wanna make a speech. I've made plenty, and there'll be plenty more to come. But point of order, the infrastructure committee referred this back to the next council meeting. So at this point, the bill is out of committee, and it will be back before the council on regular business, is my understanding. The committee did not make a recommendation on the bill itself because we were essentially referring that action to tonight's discussion. So that is my procedural understanding of where we stand, is that the bill will be coming back to the full council without a committee recommendation, but we've all had an opportunity through this process to reach consensus.
That is correct. So, you know, so based upon what I've heard, and unless anybody has any final comments, to the contrary, I think this is, you know, ready to come back in front of the full council a week from tonight on the nineteenth of January for potential action.
Week from tomorrow, tomorrow night?
Oh, that's right. Thanks, that's right. We have a holiday a week from tonight. Thank you. It is, it is the twentieth. Thanks for that clarification. Well, thank you, everybody, for your, for your time this evening. You know, I think this was, hopefully this was a good review, Charlie, and thank you for kinda setting the stage. It's a good basis that we, you know, needed to, you know, touch back to, and, you know, we've...